At six thirty, I'd like to call to order the town of Cordera regular town council meeting for Tuesday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty P M. So first item of my business, call to order.
Um, Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman is absent today and Mayor Lee.
Here.
Okay. And before we continue on with the meeting, um, it's a very auspicious day. We would like to wish our council member Pat Ravasio a very happy birthday. And our town manager Adam Wolf, a very happy birthday. So.
We're twins.
Thank you for joining us and wishing them a very happy birthday.
Thank you. Okay, bye Finn.
Okay, with that, if we could salute to the flag, give a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
So moving on to item number two, this is open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the council agenda. Speakers will be limited three minutes unless otherwise specified by the mayor or presiding officer. The public will be given an opportunity to speak on each agenda item at the time it is called. Is there anyone in the public that would like, uh, three minutes of expression time? On items not on the agenda, correct? Please do. Oh, please stand to the podium and use the mic. Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll turn on a timer for you.
Thank you, Tracy, and give me one second. I'm bringing the timer into the meeting. You should be able to. Um, start.
Thank you, Lorena. Thank you, council. It's very nice to be here. My name is Tracy Tuens, and I have been living in Cordera since nineteen ninety-five. On Chapman. And something that I'm going to take the opportunity to discuss tonight is simply for the council to consider timing. Um, parking on the streets with the street cleaners. I'm sure the council's aware, we spend money on the street cleaners. I love that they exist. They are fantastic, especially with the storms we've been having. But when they can't clean the street because there are cars parked, I think it might be a nice idea to consider having certain days. Where we allow the street cleaners to come where we are not supposed to be parking our vehicles on the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that, please?
My name is Steve Silver. I live in Cordera also. I've been here for about three years. I've been in Marin for about eight years. And I look at kind of the town vibes that I think Cordera, the Parklets, I kind of see some miscellaneous information. Some ancillary information as far as the long-term extension of the Parklets. I know Larkspur has, I think they've done away with the. I apologize upfront, my knowledge base may not be exactly right.
Um, so if you are going to speak to Parklets, we are going to be talking about it in as an agenda item. Okay, so.
I did not see the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. So, so if you'd like to stay, I think it's the first of the agenda items where we'll be discussing, um, the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Copies of the agenda are at that table if you'd like.
Excellent.
No problem.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to time of expression? Is there anyone online that would like to speak?
Um, we don't have any hands raised and we did not receive emailed public comment for open time.
Okay, so with that, I'll close, uh, open time for public comment and we'll move to item number three, which is presentations. We have none. So we'll go to item number four, which is the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff or public may request removal on item for discussion. Uh, is there any council members that want to pull an item for discussion? Staff? Anyone in the public? Anyone online?
No hands raised and no email public comment for the consent.
All right. I can get a motion?
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion to approve the consent items.
I'll second.
Call for.
I will call the number, the names of the individuals present, councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
All right, so that closes item number four, the consent calendar. So now we'll move to number five, which is public hearings. Uh, tonight we'll be discussing five A. This is a public hearing to consider adoption of urgency ordinance number ten twenty-eight extending through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The temporary permit program established by urgency ordinance number nine nine six and extending through urgency ordinance number one thousand two, one thousand twelve and one thousand twenty-four. And authorizing town staff to extend permits previously issued pursuant to urgency ordinance number nine nine six, one thousand two, one thousand twelve and two thousand twenty-four. And finding that adoption of the urgency ordinance is exempt pursuant to sequo. Um, so we're looking to provide direction also to town staff on the modification of the Zins Parklet located at two oh seven Cordera Avenue. Is there a staff report?
There is a staff report. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Um, as mentioned by Mayor Lee, this evening you'll be having a discussion on an urgency ordinance to extend, uh, the, the allowance for outdoor business program. Which would be through December thirty-first, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, and also authorized town staff to extend the previously approved permits. And lastly, staff is seeking. Direction from the council on proposed modifications to the Parklet at the Zins Wine Bar. The next slide. So the council, uh, first adopted an urgency ordinance in June of two thousand and twenty. And this allowed for businesses to extend their operations onto outdoor spaces, including a private parking lots and also onto town-owned right-of-way such as parking spaces on the street. This original ordinance set an end date of November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. And since that time, it has been extended several times. And most recently, on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, the town council considered an urgency ordinance number one zero two four. I mean, as originally presented by staff, that urgency ordinance would have extended the program through December thirty-first, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. Now, the town council held a public hearing and there were members of the public that spoke in support of extending the urgency ordinance and of Parklets in general. And in addition, uh, two business owners, um, in old Cordera Square expressed some concerns. With the Zins Parklet related to, um, parking and also privacy impacts caused to the adjacent business to the south, um, which is, um, Magara de Soleil. Um, based on the concerns that the council heard, um, they modified this urgency ordinance and established an end date of March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, and the purpose of this was to give the business owners and staff an opportunity to address the concerns that were expressed. Uh, the council also requested that staff, uh, return back to the council prior to the urgency ordinance, um, expiring on March thirty-first. And to bring a new urgency ordinance to extend the program through the year while working on the development of permanent regulations, um, and return later in two thousand and twenty-three with those permanent regulations. And next slide. Uh, so staff has had, uh, several conversations, uh, with both, uh, business owners with the Zins Wine Bar and also with Magara de Soleil. Um, and based on the concerns that were expressed at the meeting in November and also based on a review of. Other standards that have been adopted by other cities in the Bay Area, uh, staff is recommending modifications to the Parklet as shown on this slide. Um. Essentially, the, this modification would shift the southern portion of the Parklet. Um, and it would remove the Parklet from, uh, the Magara de Soleil business. And the, the revised boundary is meant to reflect the, the boundary between these two businesses. Um, and it would, it would, it would match the existing, um, uh, patio area at the Zins Wine Bar as well. There's an existing permanent patio on the sidewalk. And it would be in the same, uh, maintain that same line. Um, and this modification would be, um, made by, uh, the Public Works Department, um, likely, uh, next week. And the summary of all the different standards is included as attachment eight to your staff report, and I'm available to answer any specific questions that you have about, about those.
Um, if I can just jump in real quick, I would just like to, uh, emphasize that. Really that staff took a review of other ordinances regarding Parklets and sort of came to the conclusion that this was the most. Consistent with other approaches, uh, that we saw throughout, um, Marin County elsewhere and up into Sonoma and, and, and really throughout. Um, there is, uh, I think overall consensus view that Parklets really primarily should be, um. Really, uh, limited to the space in front of storefronts. To, uh, sort of, address sort of issues between potentially, uh, businesses that may arise as a result of encroachment into other storefronts and whatnot. So. Um, the goal here was really to take this from a staff perspective on what we thought was appropriate rather than sort of, um, you know. Leave this to sort of a, uh, permission-based system between individuals and really focus on really the land use issues involved. So. Obviously, I think it was a challenging meeting in November. Um, I've had many conversations with both, uh, business owners and I'm really feel, uh, good that we've come to a. Solution here and the conversations with both business owners that both were agreeable to. So. Uh, we'll hear, they're here today, so you don't have to leave it, uh, for me to tell you that. Though I'm sure they'll speak to this issue potentially in the public hearing section. Thanks.
Uh, next slide. Uh, the Zins Wine Bar has also, um, requested, uh, live music at the, at the Parklet. And the temporary encroachment permit agreement that was originally developed, um, did not allow, uh, music either live or amplified. Unless it was expressly permitted by the town, um, in writing. And to date, the town has not. Approved live music at the Zins Parklet or at any other Parklets in town. And so as part of, um, what's before you this evening, if the town council adopts the urgency ordinance and if there are no concerns with allowing live music. Then staff would modify the permit to allow for live music with some conditions. Um, and the conditions would limit live music to a maximum time of four times per month, require that the music, um, ends by eight P M. And also limited to three musicians and, um, instruments would not be amplified. Um, it, the town did receive a letter from David McPherson on behalf of Zins Wine Bar. Um, on this request for live music, it's included as attachment nine to your staff report. The next slide. Uh, so over the course of the last several years, there have been a total of twelve permits that have been approved as shown on this slide. Uh, we've heard from several business owners that this program really was a lifeline, uh, during the, uh, the pandemic, especially in the, the early going when, um. Businesses were not allowed to, to operate and have people indoors. And also customer preferences has changed over the years and a lot more people. Have expressed that they feel more comfortable eating and exercising outdoors instead of being indoors. Um, so the, the permits on the, the top are the temporary encroachment operation permits. These allow for businesses to expand onto town, uh, town-owned property. Uh, there are a total of seven that have been approved and there are two active permits, which is the Zins Wine Bar. And then the Lighthouse Cafe in, um, Bermetown share a Parklet. These two businesses are adjacent to one another and their hours do not overlap, so they, um, both utilize the same space. And then for the temporary outdoor use permits, uh, these, um, are for businesses that utilize, uh, their, their private parking areas. And there have been five that were approved and two are active, both gyms. Uh, next slide. Uh, these show the active, uh, temporary operations encroachment permits. On the left is the shared Lighthouse Cafe in Bermetown Parklet and on the right is the Zins Wine Bar Parklet. The next slide. And these are the two active, um, temporary outdoor use permits. Um, both are gyms and both currently utilize, uh, the private parking areas for exercise classes. The next slide. So this slide outlines the options available for the council this evening. Um, there, uh, is required that it be adopted by four-fifths vote. So since there are only four of you here this evening. Would need to be unanimous to vote in order for the urgency ordinance to be adopted. I mean, it would take, uh, effect immediately. So that concludes, uh, staff's presentation and both Adam and I are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Martha. Is there any questions from council?
Yeah, I just have a couple. You, um, Steph, you guys were able to meet with the, the both business owners that came to like, uh, mutual agreement or meeting of the minds type thing?
Yeah, I referenced that, um, and, and certainly, uh. Uh, had several conversations with both, um, business owners and, uh, at the end of the day, I was, um. Encouraged by, um. Both parties being agreeable to the solution that staff is recommending tonight. Um, so yes.
Okay, at this point in time, there's no structural changes to those Parklets, right? Or is there, there's no design standards that are going to get kicked in at this point in time?
It, well, if, if the, if the Zins Parklet is modified and several of those existing barriers would be removed and then the. Um, the platform area would be reduced in size. Um, so those modifications would, would be made. Um, but staff is working on the development of permanent regulations, um, for the council's consideration later in the year.
Okay, I would say we did talk to, um, actually just today with, uh, R J, um. About, uh, a proposal by Kyle to, sorry, the owner of Zins to put the lattice on the outside of, of the barriers. Uh, there's some lattice there right now and that could go on the outside and he was okay provided the reflectors put up at a certain height and location. Obviously that was. Could improve the appearance of how that looks.
Okay, and then with the, the shrunk down, uh, space with Zins, it looks like. There's not maybe like a quarter of a parking space that's kind of left over. Was there any consideration given? And I don't know if you could do, looking at either restriping that. I don't know if you can get, you know, if you restripped it, if you'd be able to get another car in there that would put it in front of the other business almost, or if that's just going to be, um, dead space.
I, I think at this point, there's, we would not re-stripe, given this would just be through, through the year. Um, and even if, you know. Moving forward for permanent regulations, I don't think there's enough space to re-stripe and create a new parking space, but it could be used for something like. Bike parking or some sort of, you know, other type of use. Um, and then we also, uh, permanent standards would include a kind of a minimum separation between a Parklet and adjacent parking space to allow for cars to be able to. Parallel park and pull into spaces. So that will all be evaluated by staff.
Okay, and while we're on the space part of it, the space closer to the corner in the one picture, does that get, I, I think part of that curve is kind of like curved. Ooh, double curve, curved. Um, but it looks like, is a part of it going to be squared off or can it extend through that curved part also?
The Parklet is squared off currently.
Okay.
On that northern portion.
Well, I think it extends to that little, you're talking about through the bend in the.
Yeah, you know the terminology better than I do. I call it the curve thing.
Yeah, it will, it's continued to extend on that side to the, um. Where the curb sort of actually becomes sidewalk and the bulb out.
Okay.
That will remain.
And, and then on the music part, they don't need, since when they necessarily need to get a separate permit, it would be included in the ordinance we're approving?
So it's not included in the ordinance. The ordinance essentially would just extend it through December thirty-first and then authorize staff to approve. Uh, updated permits and as part of the approval to the permit, staff would include an updated site plan and also include the stipulations for music.
Okay, so they wouldn't need to, to get a separate permit for every single time they're going to do music?
No, it would establish the other allowable times per month and they would just need to follow, follow that.
Okay, and in the process you just mentioned, are there fees associated with that?
There are no fees in, yeah, any of the permits through this program.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think that's all I have. Thanks.
So, um, I know that the Zins location has become very popular, especially when there is live music. So my question is. You know, if there are more people there than can fit in the Parklet and they want to enjoy the music. Are they free to still be on the sidewalks and, and, and be there and are they permitted to be there on the sidewalks with a drink in their hand? What are the, what are the rules there? Because I, you know, I, I don't want to do anything to limit. This, the popularity of this, but on the other hand, you're going to be with a smaller basic space. So what?
Yeah, well, I, I will say the. We will be enforcing the four-foot minimum clearance at all times. The, that should be, and I've talked to, um. The business owner about that during when there's music, you have to allow for people to access the sidewalk.
They have to be able to walk through, yeah.
So whether we can make that clearer through taping it or something like that, so that it becomes obvious, um, I would. Be monitoring that and how it's being used. As for the drinks, I, I would say that's more of an A B C, um, license issue and I'm sure they have rules around. Um, the limitations on, on where you're able to, you know, hold, hold a drink outside on the sidewalk. It's not something that we permit.
Okay, and it's not that the Parklet, it doesn't mean that they have to contain all of the activity at all times to within this space. If, if there's overflow people on the outsides of the Parklet, that's okay.
We, we aren't regulating how that works at this point in time, you know, so it's, it's, it's. Certainly, we don't want to create a scene where it's, there's problems of. Too many people there and you can't get through. I mean, that's what we don't want to see, uh, so. But there aren't any specific regulations on that. We, we, we could look at that certainly for the permanent ordinance and, and. Uh, really, all this does is, is create a. It's really bound by the limits that are on the. Plan that's part of the temporary outdoor. Um. Encroachment permit. So it's essentially an encroachment permit that's limited to that. Street area. I believe, and I'm not totally sure on the history, but I, there is that fenced area already, which. I think also you see in front of the, uh, Pizza, um, Stefano's as well, which have, in historically has been. Allowed through other types of encroachment permits and license. I don't know if license agreements as well. To allow certain businesses to extend outside into like a sidewalk cafe type style seating as well. Those are the limits of what we've actually. Are authorizing through here and, um, but certainly, you know, there's organic sort of ways in which people use space that we don't. You know, it's sort of in a gray area, I would say.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so. Once the, um, if we extend the permitting, you know, to permitting the Parklets, that's one thing. And the music is another, but that's specifically for Zins.
Correct. At this point, that, that's the only business that have, has requested to use, to have music. So if we got any additional requests from other. Businesses, we would, um, evaluate that.
Right, okay, because I could sort of see that maybe a gym would want to have music. And then, you know, we get into another, but it would just be one by one, what, whatever we do for Zins does not necessarily. Approve anything else.
Correct. Any request has to be evaluated by the planning department. Um, and for instance, if a, a use was right, you know, very close to residential, then that would all be factored into staff's determination, you know, if it would be approved, the request.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I would just say, add, you know, I think this is a good opportunity as, you know, this is a temporary ordinance. We're not talking about urgency. So in a sense, we can see how this works during a period of time and, and then see how it. Whether or not we should include it in a permanent ordinance when we get to that.
So I think you addressed it in the staff report, but I'm just going to ask one more time because I think it's important to, to understand is that. Based on your evaluation of other towns, by choosing the delineating line between properties as the boundary in which. Public property is then also assigned to temporary or permanent Parklet use. It becomes a, a really clear delineator as far as issue resolution for the town, right? So it's not just about how it affects this one individual case, but in all case scenarios, it's the fairest hand that the town can play for all. Parties involved. Is that correct in your kind of evaluation and the reason the other towns might, might have, uh, gone that direction?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment. Um, and I think too, you know, towns that have adopted permanent regulations, you don't know how businesses are, are going to change. So if you have a Parklet. That is extending in front of other businesses, you know, maybe down the road. Uh, business changes and becomes a restaurant and also wants a Parklet, so it could kind of create issues. Um, some jurisdictions do allow for a Parklet to extend into, in front of their neighbor. With permission from the neighbor, that is something that's, that several people allow, but you know, that kind of can create, you know, awkward, awkward. Miss between businesses and you obviously, you know, we want, you know, all businesses to be successful and, uh, so.
All right.
Yeah, and the other thing, there are a couple of them that allow a little bit like Nevada, I think has about two feet if you're. The parking space in front of your storefront is. Two feet over in front of the other adjacent storefront, then they say. That could be allowed and there's some others that are sort of.
Yeah, it's like, I, I, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yes, but.
I got it. Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay, so now I will open it up for public comment. Um, you'll have three minutes to make any comments about this. Agenda item. Is there anyone in the public that would like to stand up and speak? Yeah, it's your time.
There we go. So I just live, Steve Silver. I live a block up from Zins actually. And I just want to talk about the vibrancy of the bar and the, you talked about a meeting place, uh, for the, to town. You talked about the music. On Friday nights, music's not an issue as far as the, the decibels, uh, that I can see from, like I said, just a block, a block up. Um, the parking has not been an issue on there. There's plenty of parking around there, uh, to park. I've not really seen an issue. So I think it's been a great thing for the community. Uh, kind of a gathering place that people just kind of meet at Zins. I have friends that come in from out of town and it's just like a great place to meet. So. I just think that the involvement of Zins in the community, that the events they've had paid for, I think. They've paid for some events that have ha- actually occurred in the park, the park itself. So. I think that's who, who you want are people who are motivated to make Cordera a great destination for, get a, you know. Uh, rising tide raises all ships, right? So if you have, uh, the Zins, then it helps Bermetown, helps the Lighthouse, it helps all the restaurants around there. So as you can see. That you talked about, you said on Friday nights when the music comes out, it's packed down there. It's just a hop and nice place. For Cordera to say, hey, Zins is the place. Go to Cordera. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else that would like to speak?
I'm Patsy, uh, from Zins in Cordera. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that's put a lot of work into this. Um, it's been a very emotional time for a lot of people. Um, you know, there's a lot of, uh, change that has come and gone and come and gone and come and gone for the last three years. And some more coming now and to Pat's comment, you know, we never expected or planned. For Zins to turn into what it has turned into. So there's a lot of people that are really sad about losing a lot of space and we understand, um. Why that is coming. I'm a little bit disappointed at the, at not being at two full parking spots. I will tell you that. When you're looking at every table as revenue at this point, um, you know, ninety inches is a whole nother table. So, um, I just wanted to put that out there and say we're, we're grateful and thankful, um, that it looks like we're going forward on this, we're hoping. Um, I will say that when I walked around and spoke to all of the other business owners and, um, managers and the people in the town, I've spent a lot of time doing that recently. And learning about their staffs and where they park and what they hear and if they have complaints and really just wanting to make sure that we're good partners on the square. Um, I do think that there should be a larger parking sign for the public space behind the TJ's Gym. I think it has a little tiny. Parking sign and in fact, people that have grown up and lived here don't even know that parking lot exists. And, um, you know, we've asked our staff, I know Bermetown who now has a staff of thirty-five. Um, they've asked their staff to park off-site. We've also talked to the people at Bread and Roses, um, that if on the. It's about eight weeks during the year that, um, is really about an hour overlap on a Friday night between day businesses and evening businesses. That people are kind of driving around maybe a little bit looking for parking, but. The feedback I did receive is that really parking is not an issue, that you can find a spot. Um, you know, every downtown that we have in Marin County, uh, you, you have to expect to maybe not get your favorite spot. It's just the way it is. Um, so we have a lot of people that ride bikes. I was happy to hear Charles Lee mention, um. Bike parking. I think that going. Bike parking. I think that going forward, when we look at design ideas for the permanent spots, that that should be a consideration and then. That's a great use for that ninety inches. Um, because it's important. And, you know, Stefano's has the castle of, of teenage boys and their bikes and. You know, I was hoping that we might get rid of all the parking on that side of the street actually and turn it into just a. Hangout, uh, for everybody that uses it. And I see my time is up. I learned to look for the timer, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Singun, is there anyone else online or have we received written comment?
We have a hand up from David McPherson.
Good evening. I just want to acknowledge the hard work that the staff has done. In studying all of the, uh, ordinances that have, uh, sprung up sort of post-COVID. To, um. Normalize these parklets and, um. My family certainly appreciates. Uh, Zins going, being able to go down the street and go to Zins and we really appreciate the music. And I think it's wise. To, uh, to, for the town council to approve the staff's recommendation. So that the, the town staff can continue. To gather information that will, uh, craft the very best, uh, permanent parklet ordinance. And, uh. That's what I look forward to. Thank you very much.
We don't have any additional hands raised and let me. We do not have any email public comment for the site.
Thank you. Uh, so with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the dice for any last considerations before we. Make a decision.
Um, one thing I wanted to, that I was thinking about was, um, drums. If there's live music, I mean, it's, it's easy to keep things quiet. Um, with other instruments, other acoustic instruments, but if there are drums, that might be. An issue. So I just don't know if that's part of the jazz ensemble or. I, oh, he has to let you know if he can talk.
I know, uh, uh, we'll let staff respond first.
I will tell you what I know, uh, which is just from, I asked actually the same question, um, at least of Kyle. Uh, the other business owner. At Zins and, uh, because I had the same sort of. You know, it is a louder sound and it resonates a little differently than other music, but I was told that's not. Part of the music program that they have. I don't. Know if there's any, um. Interest in, in that going forward, but.
So let's, let's step back. Ultimately, they're being allowed this temporary. Function of music and it's in their best interest not to make the neighbors upset through drums and that type of thing and it's. Only temporary currently, but if done correctly, could be more normalized for a long term through the ordinances or what other means, right? So. Irrespective of the drums, there's also just the kind of business consideration about the impacts, no matter what. Type of instrument it is and, and it is not acoustically amplified, right? So. Um, you know, that's one thing to consider because I feel like staff's not going to be able to answer or give direct like. And if we start excluding one instrument in particular, you know, it's like, oh, if you ask me for. Uh, jazz, a, a trombone or something is probably louder than a, uh, drum. So like ultimately. Where do we draw the line? How do we define a drum to get that particular might be very difficult?
Right, I'm, I'm just putting it, you know, on the table. Because, you know, it's a difference between a drum set and a bong, a set of bongos. I mean. Just, you know, I'm just thinking about things that might come up. That could come up and just sort of being, um.
So with that, what I would then ask staff myself is. You know, even though this is being put on the temporary permit. Is it because it's temporary? Can it be revoked? Or, you know, how would we address any kind of issue that might come up from any instrument that is? Become a nuisance, just.
Yeah, we do. We actually have al- always had ability through the agreement. I, I forget the exact terms, but to either modify. Uh, the permit that was granted. Um, or to. Um, ultimately, it, it, you know, revoke if there were significant issues, but modification, certainly that if something comes up. There is that ability. Um, we would. And again, this is alert, this is where this is valuable learning to be done here. Um, I think when we go to a permanent regulations, certainly there's going to be more investment by a property owner in. When we up the ante on terms of design and whatnot, so we would want to make sure that there are certain expectations that the. Business owner or property owner applicant would have going into that arrangement. But yes, currently in this temp, we have been sort of. Waiting to see how things played out and, and, and that's why we're asking for. Not coming to you for approval of this particular. Uh, permit, the TOE permit, staff has been doing this, uh. The permit issuance for these parklets and the other spaces and the gyms and whatnot. And I've been monitoring and I've been sort of, as we get feedback, can go to the property owners and say, look, this is a problem or this needs to. Um, be modified, the behavior needs to be modified in X, Y, and Z ways. So that's how we've been handling it. Can, can, continue to do that moving forward.
So help with any concern you had about that or just?
Yeah, it, it was just. Just wondering.
Council member Thomas, sorry. Thank you.
Specifically, you know, were we going to look at this since this is sort of their temporary permit, were we going to? You know, look at things sort of individually like that, but it sounds like, I understand what you're saying, let it play out. See what problems might arise and respond to it from there.
And then, I'm sorry, Rosa, if it helps, the times I've been there, I've never seen a, a drum set there and they, they have limited space to begin with. So if they brought out a full drum space and had a guitar playing another player, they would probably lose like three or four tables doing that, which they probably don't want to do. But I've never seen a drum set there.
I think the, the loudest thing there is usually Sally when she does, uh, Janis Joplin, but that's usually a really welcome sound for everybody, so. Um, just my only comment was. First of all, I'm really supportive of Zins and of the idea of parklets. When we first moved here from Chicago. I could not believe that more people weren't dining outdoors in California. When in Chicago, the minute it turns forty-five, everybody's like. Let's take our shirts off and sit outside. So I think it's a wonderful trend for California. Welcome to the great outdoors, um. And I was concerned about the appearance at nighttime with the bougainvillea and the lights. It's really pretty, but the orange and white barricades without anything in front of them was kind of bothering me as a beautification person. So. I love the idea of putting the lattice on the outside. And I would say that you've got so many supporters, you could crowdsource that. I know some good carpenters in that group who would be willing to come in and. Maybe help, uh, create something really, you know, so you guys, I know you're a small business and you don't have. Budgets for big. Stuff, so, um, that was my only concern. So I'm really glad that that got, got solved, so. I'm happy.
Yeah, I think Zins is a great partner. Um, you brought a lot of energy to that space there. And I'm glad that staff did a really good job about working everything out. And what I like about this town is we do collaboration and we try to partner with people and not just take an adversarial role. And I think this is a good example of that. So I'm okay with, um, adopting the urgency resolution and also providing direction to staff with respect to, um. Uh, the Zen space that we talked about with cutting down the space and then the music part of it. Those are the two things you guys are looking for. And I'm not sure if we need a vote or not, if we're just considering it's a public hearing.
We do need to take an official vote because, uh, we have to adopt the urgency ordinance tonight.
Okay, so I can go ahead and make the motion to prove, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like my time. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah. Yeah, um, so yeah, so. Uh, I can make the findings and, and basically what I wanted to address and what I really hear from the council. townspeople, business owners, is that, uh, the ordinance and the doc, this redefining of around Minky Park is really taking traction. And really appreciated and beautiful what's happening, right? And being fair to all businesses is important. So then what happens if sins has more demands than you have at that little footprint, right? Like the other thing is, is there's a lot of other buildings and building stock and building stock is modifiable, right? You know, I, just the other day, someone was talking about adding. A rooftop mezzanine to one of the buildings in downtown Mill Valley to create kind of a medial music space. I mean, there's. There's a lot more permanent options that I hope that everybody is now seeing and. Starting to explore and maybe it isn't the parklet or the ordinance that basically brings your greatest success or. Solves the demand that you have and it's exploring those with other business owners, property owners and stuff like that that might really. Reward the entire community with benefit, right, to explore. So that's another thing that I would encourage is not to put all these eggs in that. You know, orange and yellow basket, so. Um, with that, now if someone could, uh, make a, a motion to both approve the, uh, the. The temporary ordinance and then also the, uh, exception, uh, to, for staff to allow music on the.
Well, we, we have a motion, so we'll need a second now.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right.
For the adoption of the urgency ordinance, right? And then separately, we'll do the direction to.
No, I think I can do it both at the same time, just to the, make sure that we're, um, get. It clear that it's urgency ordinance, adoption of the urgency ordinance and to provide, um. Direction to staff to modify the Zins parklet as recommended.
So let me do this. I'll just amend the motion to, um, approve the urgency ordinance number ten twenty-eight and also provide direction to staff regarding, uh, regarding. The Zins parklet that we discussed.
And finding that the adoption of the ordinance is exempt from sequel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll second that again.
A call for a vote.
Uh, okay, council member Christina.
Yes.
Council member Avasio.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman is absent, um, for this meeting, um, and Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Thank you. All right. So that closes our public hearings. Uh, moving on to number six, the business items, we'll consider six A, uh, which is the consideration and possible adoption, adoption of. Resolution number twenty, twenty twenty-three, receiving and accepting the calendar year twenty twenty-two housing element annual progress report. For the town of Cormodera, fifth cycle housing element. Is there staff report?
There is. Good evening, Mayor Lee and council members. Tonight, we're talking about the housing element APR, which we do every year, um, in California state law. Um, says that every year by April first. Um, every town or city or county, um, shall prepare a housing element annual progress report. On, um, the status and progress in implementing our housing element. State law requires that the council, um, receive and accept. The APR, um, and after which, um. Staff will forward that report to HCD. The APR includes information, um, on the town's progress and meeting our regional housing needs allocation. Numbers at each income. Category. And in, in more recent years, HCD has added to the, um, variety of information required on the report. Um, they require us to report new housing units that received a planning entitlement. Um, new units that received a building permit, um, as well as those units that were granted occupancy or completed construction. Um, and this year, HCD is also requesting that we report information related to. Um, urban lot splits or development applications submitted under Senate Bill number nine. Um, but in, as in years past, um, only issued building permits are used, um, to determine our progress and meeting. Um, Rena targets. If you put in mind, Lauren, if you could pull up, um, page two of the staff report. Um, maybe. And zoom in on the, the table one. Um, it's. That's it. Um, the table, uh, here, again, that's page two of the staff report shows the town's progress toes, towards those Rena targets for the planning period. Um, for which the total, uh, target was seventy-two units. And given that we far exceed, um, the to- the total is going to be the, uh, right-hand most column there, uh, the target on the left in blue. Um, and the total, uh. Produced, um, is the second to last column, um, on the right. And given that we exceed our Rena, um, targets in this planning period and, and we've met most of those, we've met those targets. Since two thousand eighteen, the town is not currently subject to SB thirty-five. Uh, streamlining. And that's a non-discretionary streamlining for qualified housing. Um, projects in HCD will reassess our progress towards meeting. Uh, Rena numbers in the upcoming, um, housing element planning period. About halfway through the eight-year period, um, which means that. Uh, in twenty twenty-seven, it's likely we would be subject to SB thirty-five streamlining. And our ability really to keep pace and exceed these numbers can, um. Uh, largely, uh, is a result of our production of accessory dwelling units. Um, in twenty twenty-two, uh, there's a total of seventeen units that were produced and all of those are accessory dwelling units. It includes. Um, also includes five junior accessory dwelling units. And in total, during this whole planning period, um. We've, uh, the town's produced sixty total accessory dwelling units. Um, so that's almost all of our target. Um, Rena number just in, in ADUs. I mean, in twenty twenty-one, the Casa Buena. Um, Home Key Project allowed us to far exceed in the, the very low. Income category as well with eighteen apartments, um, that were created there. Um, as a result of that, that program. I mean, uh, additional details on the twenty twenty-two, uh, production are, uh, attachment one, exhibit A to attachment one. Attachment one is a resolution, um, that accepts and forwards this report to HCD. And exhibit A is the report itself. Page three, um, reflects those building permits, um, for housing units produced and that are. Um, counted towards our Rena, um, target. And, uh, again, once accepted by, uh. The town council, um, through adoption of the resolution, the APR is sent to HCD and it's also sent to the Office of Planning and Research. Stayed in California. Adam, I can answer any questions, um, that you have. If you have any.
Just to note, I, I wanted to add that the. So seventeen accessory dwelling units were, um, created in twenty twenty-two. Um, just for comparison purposes, if you go back to two thousand sixteen. Um, seventeen units were also created, but. It, it basically sixteen of those units were built at the enclave. So that's essentially the four buildings, fairly large buildings. Built on Costa Buena Avenue. Um, new condominiums. So just for comparison, you know, you have seventeen or sixteen ADUs. In, in the backyard versus a new sixteen-unit development on Costa Buena. Um, still producing the same number of units, but a very different. Way of doing so and not both are, are sort of have. I think fit in well with, with their location, but, um, just thought it would be, it's interesting to. Um, put some context to the actual numbers and, and how they are ultimately look in our community.
Yeah, just a question. If I'm reading these numbers right, our original target number was seventy-two and we hit like two ninety-five.
Yes.
It's like four hundred and ten percent increase. Did any other town or city in Marin County? Or even California, do you know if they met numbers like this? Or met their numbers or exceeded, just out of curiosity. Cause it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, no, I, it is, um. I think there are some that have met their targets. I don't know by this sort of. How much we've exceeded it and. Each income level, which I think is actually maybe more impressive, so. Um, just in terms of accommodating units for a variety of different income levels. Um, so I, I don't know. Um, there were a couple there, I think in all of California, the last time we checked, I think there is. Sort of do this by how many are subject to Senate Bill at thirty-five. And I guess the two thousand, when was the last time they did that, two thousand?
They, they updated it, um, subsequent to two thousand nineteen, but it's, it's roughly the same and it's, it's twenty-eight jurisdictions.
In Cali.
Um, in Calif, all of California, just five hundred and nine different jurisdictions, um, and only twenty-eight of them have met their arena targets.
Yeah, no, thanks again. It's impressive.
It really underscores the effect of some of the ADU legislation that's come, um. And you've seen, uh, through our ADU ordinance, um, as we updated over the last few years, the, kind of the effect of that. That that ordinance has had on housing production and then types of housing that we're seeing. Uh, right now with the backyard ADUs.
Just a question.
Yeah, of course.
Um, just a question about the ADUs. As they're being put in, are we hearing any that they are problematic? Are we getting complaints or are they pretty well? Um, being accepted and incorporated without too much. Are we getting complaints or are they pretty well, um, being accepted and incorporated without too much problem?
From time to time, we are, um, having to explain, um, state law and our, and our town's own, um, AD ordinance that was adopted to comply with state law, why these units are allowed, um, for instance, to be set back so close to property lines. Um, but I think generally speaking, people do understand that, um, you know, there's a housing crisis in California and part of what our state lawmakers are trying to do with ADUs is, um, make it easier to create, um, smaller units, uh, because by, um, connection, by, by default, a smaller units can tend to be more affordable. And yes, we're still in Marin County where, um, the rental on eighty hundred square foot ADU is going to be more than it would be you know, outside of the county, but, uh, at the end of the day, it is a smaller, um, unit versus a new, uh, single family dwelling that's, you know, several thousand square feet, um, in area. So we're seeing, um, lots of understanding and excitement and buzz about being able to create these ADUs um, and lots of questions and concerns as they're popping up mostly through building permit from neighbors who, um, you know, really, we just tried to educate them on why, uh, they're seeing what they're seeing, uh, show up in their neighbor's backyard.
And just one other point of clarification, the above moderate income classification, that is not affordable housing, right? It, those are all the units that we have created that are outside of the affordable criteria. Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make, I just, I wanted to clarify that not only for myself, but for others, because it looks like those are all qualifications of affordable housing. But obviously, the above moderate income wouldn't qualify for that. Thank you.
I would just, and, and just the one that has created the most sort of negative, I would say comments and, because it's not quite in the backyard, but there are these lots that are uniquely shaped, uh, is the one, I think there were a couple created over on El Camino, um, that are.
Marin, the Marin Estates entryway with the two units on the left.
That, that one, there's some comments on, they're most, they're, they're not in the backyard and they're visible, but yet they do meet the standards set for housing. And I think, uh, you know, I'm not exactly sure where they are right now, but at the end of the day, they will, they will certain meet a need that doesn't exist, um, elsewhere in the community, I guess, and ultimately from a housing standpoint, not from necessarily. I think we're working on the aesthetics and the landscaping to go around.
A few trees will do wonders there, yeah. Thank you for that.
So, number one, I've seen ADUs executed in other municipalities, and I have to say that the adoption is not just because of, you know, the region, it's really about the quality of the staff and execution here, the understanding of the ordinance, the ease of permitting and basically, uh, getting it built, right? Because a lot of people run up against municipalities that either don't want to try to support it or don't know how to, but that really slows or impedes the process. And so I think that it's a really shining star on the report to staff and the way that they execute those kind of request and permits. Um, the other one that I think is interesting out of that twenty eight, you know, to basically execute sixty that are ADUs. I wonder out of those twenty eight municipalities, whether we're leading the state in ADU production period based on our, you know, going way above our belt, yeah, per capita. Um, and, and I'm curious, like, is that, that we would be able to continue to support that, right? And, and as we move into new arena cycles and that type of thing, and, and in general, for that amount of housing stock, the amount of kind of real impacts aren't perceived day to day, um, maybe in acute moments. So, uh, you know, do we anticipate ways that we will be able to continue to do that? Are we going to run out of space with just allowing one ADU? It's just something to consider for the long run. It's not, I don't know, it's, it's a question, but it's not for now. Yeah, 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 but, um, and then the other one is, is, uh, you know, so out of the, right now, would the SB thirty five compliance, right? If, if you miss the target one year out of that cycle, then that automatically opens you up, or is it a larger aggregate? Um, because I think, uh, that is a question I have, and then I have a follow-up.
Yeah, they're, um, as they're, um, going to be looking at our progress toward meeting our arena targets, um, halfway through the next eight-year cycle. So at year four, um, they'll be looking at how, how we're meeting those numbers.
So that's true for all municipalities, so. I think it's actually, they'll be doing it this next year too as well, at the end of this cycle.
We'll look and then they'll see that we met our arena targets at the end of this cycle, which fast forward.
Right, so, so that's, so, so in my understanding, then, if you made the last four years, so then you're protected for four years. So next year, when we're evaluated, because we're way over, then we actually get the four, the next four years of that next arena site. So even though it's an eight-year arena cycle, it's actually pushed out, uh, twelve years from the initiation of that, that date, right? So, um, if we're talking about twenty twenty two, we'll be protected till twenty twenty six, which then means if we couldn't comply the next eight year, you know, the, the first two cycles that, uh, twenty twenty two to twenty thirty, it would actually be open to SB thirty five until twenty thirty four. Which is an interesting thing, because that like.
I think it would reevaluate at the end of twenty twenty, uh, twenty thirty.
Right.
Thirty one, and we may, who knows, maybe we caught up by then.
Well, no, that, that's not what I'm getting at. I, I think it's interesting that there's this perception that the cycle is tied to those actual dates, but really it's an eight, it's a four-year push.
I see.
It's not that the eight years is the actual production, but then the consequences of that production pushes another four years forward.
Yeah, they're, they're definitely looking at how, the progress that you're making towards meeting those numbers, and that's the fifty percent. They want to see how these have, at least half of the units that are allocated for each income category, um, produced or, or permitted in that first four years.
I will just say, there, there may be another bill by then that.
Yeah.
Takes this obsolete and.
Fair, fair, we're thinking of RENA now. Uh, uh, that's not what I'm getting at, I just think that it's interesting, because I always wondered how that ate. So thank you for just discussing it, so I can, no, um, and I think it's important to, because some, as communities start, fall under the streamlining of SB thirty five, I think the regional communities are starting to see the impacts and, and how those streamlined projects can basically use those to an advantage that's far more damaging to the community than, uh, a more civil dialogue at the, at the levels that, you know, um, some municipalities have had. So, uh, I just wanted to point that out and thank staff for creating that kind of environment within Corder Madera, um, for everyone involved. So with that, oh.
Yeah, just for the benefit of the public, can you just give the high level, the consequences of SB thirty five and what happens if we fall into that?
Yeah.
Just on a high level, thanks.
Um, SB thirty five requires that jurisdictions apply a, a streamlined, um, non-discretionary process, um, to qualified housing projects, um, and some of those, um, and, and a jurisdiction that has not or, or doesn't keep pace with those arena targets would then be subject to, um, SB thirty five. Um, for example, the project would need to be a, a specified number of affordable units. It would have to comply with objective standards such as those in our odds, uh, toolkit. Um, and it, it doesn't allow, um, the most famous part is that it doesn't allow for public hearings or discretionary review process like, um, design review, there's some other, you know, requirement, statutory requirements, um, other than that, but that's in a nutshell, I think.
So basically, if it meets whatever requirements, it's an over the counter type permit and it doesn't go through the planning commission or designer in review.
Right.
And what are the scale of those type projects that could occur? Like how big, there, there's no limit on how big a building they could build with that, as long as it's within our, uh, zoning?
Yeah, it, there are, it's not, there, there are some limitations, um. It, you know, you basically start with that, and then if you build on sort of a density bonus, then yeah, those sort of all bets are off in terms of what rules you have to comply with. But I would just say, you know, there's one, I know there's an application, whether or not it goes, continues, um, and gets built. I think it's a, maybe about a ten-story building in one city that is being, was applied for through SB thirty five and approved already. Um, I think Nevada has a couple, um, I'm not exactly.
Six-story, seventy-five foot tall, and that was Nevada.
Those are based on sort of the regulations in place in those communities, but it speaks to sort of where in general, I think a lot of the regulations from the state are going in terms of, um, you know, allowing for development to occur, um, and, and, but you do see, um, I think more of applicants using these processes so far in cases where they've been, and this is sort of the, the builder's remedy, which in places where they've had, hit stumbling blocks and working with the communities or towns where they've actually been trying to build something or get development passed through the normal channels, so.
I just have one more quick question. We all know how good the state is at meeting out penalties for goals not met, but are there any rewards for this incredible work we're doing? Do we get, uh, extra transportation dollars or anything to support the infrastructure that supports all this housing?
Um, you know, it's interesting, I mean, there is a, the only thing that they've come up with that I'm aware of, and Martha, please time in and Tracy as well. I just, there is a designation now that the state has, which is called pro housing community, which does sort of, um, if you, you apply for it and you have to show you've met certain criteria in terms of basically, um, probably RENA is, is up there in terms of one of the criteria, if you've met your RENA. But there's other things that you're supposed to be doing to show that you are welcoming new housing to your community. And if you, that you will score you much higher in terms of potential grant funding and transportation dollars and whatnot. Um, and, uh, so that's the, the real biggest carrot. I think, I think I've seen that they're trying to reward communities with, I think Emeryville as, was one of the more recent examples that they were designated as a pro housing community, so that is.
Thank you.
So I guess, based on that, would we qualify for that term?
I don't, I don't know, I haven't looked into the process exactly of what would, it would take to qualify all the details of that, but certainly, um, it's something that could be pursued, um, if the council.
At least understood.
Understood, yeah.
Okay. So with that, uh, we'll end questioning and open it up to the public. Is there any public comment on item? Seeing none in the public is, in the, in person, is there any, uh, online?
We do not have any emailed public comment, and we also have no hands raised.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the dice for, uh, final thoughts or emotion? Or an approval, I guess.
So we just need to approve it, just to move to approve the report?
Um, it's adoption of the resolution, um, receiving and accepting the report.
I hereby move, we receive and accept the report on housing.
Uh, we have, and, uh, move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I got a motion in a second, Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman, Vice Mayor Beckman is absent, Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Okay, so that closes item six A, we'll move on to item six B. This is the consideration and possible introduction of a resolution to revise the confidential professional technical and mid-management salary schedule C for the positions of senior civil engineer and building official and approve a salary increase for existing senior civil engineers. Is there a staff report?
Yes, uh, Mayor Lee and council members, I have a brief staff report. This is, this is really a, an item that, uh, follows up directly on some of the discussions we had during our strategic planning sessions with the town council regarding some of the challenges we've had, um, as a, as a town recruiting certain hard-to-fill positions. And then specifically, as discussed in the staff report, we're talking about the building official position, uh, and senior, uh, engineer position, both really critical roles, uh, and important, um, managerial roles for the town, um, and, uh, you know, we've had recruitments out for now several months. I would say, uh, with the building official, uh, position since the end of October, um, and the civil engineer, uh, position we pursued, uh, since I think December. Um, we've had, you know, basically few and far between, if any qualified applicants, on the building official side, we did have, uh, one applicant that we are very close to, uh, hiring, but unfortunately, um, we're not able to do so. Um, he chose to stay with his, uh, current organization. And so this is one effort amongst others that we are looking at to, uh, make the position more attractive and more competitive for, um, qualified individuals. And I think that's what I would stress is that we're, you know, we're, we're looking for people who really add value to our organization and that are seeking to, um, really uh, do the great work that I think our, uh, existing staff really, um, attempt and try to do and really ultimately, I think are successful at doing, because we get people who really want to, uh, do what's best for the town and succeed and, and work hard at their, at their positions and, and grow as individuals. So, um, any, in any case, so what's before you are, are, uh, is a resolution to revise the confidential professional technical and mid-management salary schedule. By practice, this is a two, two-hearing, uh, item or two-meeting item for the town council. Uh, but it would revise those schedules, um, uh, and basically take the scale, um, which is a five-step scale upward by five percent, um, for that, the bottom and the, the top. And with that, we're, we're hopeful that we would re-advertise, um, of both positions and, and, uh, receive some more qualified applicants. I will say with the building official, our, our, uh, our intention is to also, um, hire a, um, recruitment firm to help us with that recruitment, um, which may, um, I think it's important to not just be in, in California, but maybe a little bit more wider range, um, um, recruiting is, is warranted. And so I think, uh, working with our, uh, Janet, our human resources manager, to, uh, hire a recruitment firm for that position is, is warranted. Um, I think RJ is more confident that with the salary, the five percent salary increase, he would be able to, um, find a qualified applicant, more qualified applicants locally and through his own search, um, through our traditional search methods. So with that, um, you know, there is obviously with this, um, you know, there, there may be, depending on how quickly we would fill the position, some increase to the, um, uh, in costs for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three budget, but, um, we're, we're working with Daria, um, that is, uh, can be, um, captured and, and sort of paid for in, within our current budget, um, so there's no need to revise our current budgets and for those two positions. And that's all I have, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this one.
Yeah, just clarify, so the salary brings us in line to make us more competitive in relation to other towns and cities in, in Marin.
Yeah.
Should make it easier to find somebody.
Yes.
Okay. And then you mentioned also, there's other efforts, can you discuss some of the other efforts?
Well, yeah, I mean, one was going with the recruiter for the building official position, which I think will, um, be more targeted to qualified individuals, um, so it's something we haven't done traditionally in the past, but, you know, this is something I think we, we need to start to think about, especially for the senior, um, level positions. Um, we, this is a, an issue throughout, not just our town, other towns as well, um, and cities and, and are certainly, we've heard this from our police department as well, just the ch- challenge, um, recruiting, uh, good qualified individuals who weren't, want to work for local government, um, or, and who have the skills, experience. Um, so that's, I would say that right now is the other effort we're looking at, um, uh, for individuals, um, and just getting more creative with how we start to think about advertising in general, um, through our own, you know, postings and, and where we're, where we're sort of advertising, this is something we're thinking about and looking to do.
Okay, and I know there's a budget effect on this, which is fine, because it seems like it's somewhat minimal, at least for this budget cycle. Um, but why didn't you go maybe like seven percent instead of five or was seven percent too high? And again, I'm not doing the numbers in my head, I'm just looking at the number, like, you know, would have been easier to go to seven percent, a little bit more money, and then even, even more competitive.
I, I think we feel this is the right, I mean, typically this also isn't something we would need to do mid, sort of mid-con, you know, while we've already negotiated an MOU with the mid managers. So we would typically not do this, but I think in this case, it's warranted. And I, I think we could be successful at this, at this range and five percent, discussing again with our, with Janet and, uh, and RJ as well.
Thanks.
So that was my first question too, was is five percent enough? It, it doesn't. So that was my first question too, was is five percent enough? It, it doesn't really sound like it would be a big tiebreaker uh, for a potential employee. And I'm just wondering, is there any way um, we could offer or authorize a do not exceed, like, you know, up to ten percent, up to seven percent or something, so that you have some flexibility in negotiating with the right people if, if you need to do that. And then also I really support the headhunter thing, you know, having worked in marketing for a long time, the headhunters always came up with just the best recruits. Is there, is, is that, that's obviously an additional cost to us. And I'm assuming that that's not factored in here, that that's over and above. And then are there any other perks that can be offered? Or I know we give free parks and recreation, summer daycare to employees, but are there other things, other creative things we could be doing to, um, attract really top candidates?
Yeah, I mean, these are all things worth thinking about. Um, so I don't have the, you know, the full list in front of me, but we're, we're certainly something that I'm continually thinking about along with Janet, um, and, uh, about what other things we can sort of play up and about our organization. I think, you know, it, it, there's, we talked about this again, str- other strategic planning session, longer term, there may be things we can, we can start to explore, um, you know, the cost of living is, is a challenge here. So I, it, there's a fine line between really throwing all our eggs into a, um, financial solution and, and thinking of other creative ways to, um, actually um, sort of play up the, um, the, you know, our town and our organization as a, as a good place to work. And and I do think, I mean, we look around, we, we, we know we have, uh, good staff and I think that goes a long ways. And I hear that with our, the building official who we recruited, I it's one of the, that's, that's sort of a, a plus is I can bring them and have them sit with our staff and say, this is, this is who you get to work with. And, and I think that does, um, I, I got very good response on that. Um, so I think there's a good environment here. And I think once people, it's just getting people into the door for the interview and to see what we have here. You know, we will have a new town hall. I mean, there are some things like that's something that's, I think some candidates will look at uh, and be, and make that, that will be appealing. So I think there are things, um, but it's really just getting them in, in the door and, and meeting, um, our, our staff and, and, um, and, and, and looking at the work that we're doing. And I think, uh, those are all exciting things for the right, for the people I'm looking to hire as well. So.
And, and what about the question of the do not exceed? I mean, to give you a little bit of negotiating power, is there a way to, to make that? I, I mean, I would hate to have you be unable to hire the person you want because it's, it's, it is seven, you need seven percent more, you need, I mean, is that likely to be the case? And is that something that we could do?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think we're comfortable here. I, I think there are some, um, we felt this was, uh, you know, we, we, we've called out and, and are looking at a couple of positions here, but when you look at the entire structure of the salary schedules, you have to sort of.
Without giving everybody that ten percent.
Feel, but yeah, you, you know, pushing up and getting too compacted with the.
Right.
You know, the director or too far away from.
I just want to make sure you have enough to do.
I hear you.
Because every month that we go without these key employees is a, is, is a struggle for the staff and the town, right? I mean, people are being the, the projects are being delayed, things are not happening. So doing it sooner rather than later is.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I, I also, uh, you know, in line with, um, what you're talking, what you're mentioning about offering even more upfront. The issue with that is then if you're using recruiter, the fee to them is really high. I mean, to, what you're going to pay out to them will be really high. So I can understand not wanting to come out of the gate with this really high salary, but maybe as an incentive for people to stick around. Um, you, it's five percent, but then the increases, and I, and I don't know with CalPERS and all of that and all being in this, you know, how limited you are with, you know, just saying this is, it's five percent now, but you know, this is what your increases look like going forward because once you hire them, then you know, you don't have to pay the recruiter anymore, but what you hire them at, that's the percentage that you're paying them. And it's, I mean, I know you know this, it's a lot.
Yeah.
So, yeah, some, some, some companies, if someone comes to them, one person um, applies online and the other person applies to a recruiter, they'll go with the person who came to, to them online, just so they don't have to pay the recruiter because it's a lot of money. So I can see, you know, setting it up a little, you get it later after the recruiter's gone.
Yeah, one, one more. Have you ever thought about doing like a signup bonus? Because it, it doesn't directly affect the salary part of it. So you can still keep in line theoretically with the salary, but you're just offering a bo- a signup bonus. It's only a thought.
Yeah, no, and, and we've talked about with that, with the, uh, central Marin police authority. So I know that's out there. It's, um, I haven't gone there yet, so.
So I'm, I'm going to start off by saying my first question yesterday when we were trying to assess the police council was what question can I ask that basically solves the problem? And nobody has the answer, right? And it's across all municipalities, right? So we can definitely spitball ideas all day long. We can throw money at it. We can do whatever, right? But like, do you think in the current condition that we will be able to meet all those needs, even if we like really raise the bar high as far as salary expectations? Is that really what we're up against when you really are looking at staff day to day? What, um, is, you know?
Um, I do, I know. I mean, I, I, I'm, I think I'm understanding your question, right? Like, do you think we'll, we'll get there?
Yeah, well, and, and so, so, so my thing is, is we've heard a lot of different ideas or questions of things that could we, could you come back to us and, and would this be effective, right? And, and in all instances with other large municipality leaders, they're all reticent to say that even throwing a certain amount of money will actually solve the problem, right? And so that's where it's like,
Yeah.
I tend to go to an even more outlandish, creative world of buy them cars because they're all having to live in Petaluma so that then they can drive down here in Teslas, like, you know, and instead of a just pure money bonus, but then others would say, well, that money bonus could be a down payment in a house in Petaluma, right? And there's also a lot of what I see is we're looking for mid-level or higher, you know, so is there ways that instead of just giving money to interlopers that come in, is there ways to reward the people that have been long-term diligent employees that make the town? And are we really enhancing and, and pushing those programs? And, and the, the danger I've seen there is many people find their position and they're happy with it and they no longer want to move beyond that, right? Uh, but then I also have seen many times in organizations, there's this group of people that want to kind of fake it until they make it and give it, be given the opportunity. So this qualified kind of, you know, when it comes to a license or a proven license, I think that that's critical, but other positions that basically people could fall in and under the right tutelage, you know, be able to kind of enhance their stature within, are we really exploring those options and really even saying, hey, it, it's necessary, the town needs you to step up to those kinds of things. I mean, are you exploring those kinds of options as well?
Yeah, yeah, I think we, we definitely are. Um, you know, and I think you know, this is sort of a, uh, we're not, there are larger forces to your earlier point, there are larger forces at play that I don't, uh, that are hard to predict, like how they will play out over time and, and affect sort of our ability to hire long-term. I mean, this, this isn't, we've had periods in the past where it's been hard and difficult, and then it becomes easier to find good talented people, people. And so there are some cycles to this. Um, that we should be aware of and not sort of just sort of, uh, think that this is all going to be a crisis forever, you know, so, um, but at the same time, you know, there are changes that I think we should all be aware of. I think I, I talked, I was talking to the chief and one of the things that may make government work not as enticing in the future is, which we all think was a good idea, but the new pension aspect and then new employees coming in under the Reform, um, Act after the Reform Act. It's not as great of a package as they used to have, you know, so, so there are, if there's other options, maybe individuals might think to go in the private sector and do consulting in the building field or the engineering field. And so you're, you're starting to, you know, so those are, that's one thing. Obviously we've talked about affordability and, and cost of living and those sorts of things as well. So there are larger forces. I just don't want to feel like overreact until we need to actually, uh, do so. So I think, um, this is a, maybe a small, but I think it's a meaningful step in the right direction here to help see where we get, um, in terms of recruiting.
Right. And so one thing you brought up was the larger idea and, you know, it's, um, we've subsidized through private, those people that ultimately might find that the 401K is more, you know, like basically it's a shift outside of in-house services, right? And that's where from a, a service level standpoint, from government, we, you know, at the building department level, we, we've used those services and, and they are more abstract and they are less tailored to, to people. So part of this, do you have the ability, if we contract these services out, if they're really needed to basically meet this need now, it's a little more expensive with the goal of we are continually pursuing to fill these in a more permanent condition in-house because there are all kinds of advantages outside of just the financial about having staff that really understands as a culture. Is that really?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying really to do this through ideal means and, and make sort of the this work, um, I'm thinking of the building officials. Yes, you can go and, and there are good people who do building official work as a consultant. Um, obviously I think we're really enjoy having Thomas Aaron's, our current contracting, you know, our consultant who we're contracted with right now to be our billing official because he's has, is local, he's familiar, he's, he's a great individual, he knows how we work as a team, um, and so we all enjoy working with them. So, but yes, there are other, if we, if we need to go there, we certainly can, can look to that. Um, but there's, um, yeah, I, you know, I think in general, we've tried to really building, uh, building departments, a good example is bring in employees that are sort of, we are training up and ultimately can, um, start to build towards that succession planning and, and have that future with the town and organization and, and long-term sort of perspective of, of, um, of, uh, uh, being part of our, our team and organization. And so that's the ideal. That's what we're searching for. And I'm, I'm not giving up on that yet. So.
Yeah, and that maybe is a different discussion item like down the line, right? But, um, I appreciate your candid, uh, answer to those questions. Um, is there more questions?
One more question. And this is just something that I, I haven't thought to bring up because there are so many other things to talk about, but the workforce housing that the county is putting in out at San Quentin is for, I guess, any teachers in the county, but only municipal employees of the county. Is there any way to get them, especially because they're in the Twin Cities area, to also accept municipal employees of our communities?
I think there's a certain percentage that is going to be restricted for, I, I don't remember whether it's teachers in the county district, but the other part is a lottery system as I understand it as well. So that, I mean, that is, there's no preferential treatment, but there's certainly an ability for individuals to apply and we should, you know, for those, it, it may be a, a good option for some individuals. Certainly that's, um, um, worthwhile promoting, um, that that's.
I should have known you were already on it. I just, you know, you're already working on it. And I think I, I, when I saw it was just county employees, I thought, well, first of all, I wonder if there's going to be enough county employees. It's a pretty big development. So hopefully the town will be able.
Yeah. Office of Education.
Yeah, it's Marin County. Oh, it's just the Office of Education? It's not Marin County teachers?
No, so, so when the, um, when the supervisor did speak at the, and it, it was referred to as kind of a JPA type or where it's multiple organizations that come together for an application for financing from the state and the state will provide financing and the actual property, from what I understand. It is open and it's unclear that, because we don't have any of our smaller municipality participating in the, the funding requests and the building of that, but it's my understanding that it will be available to a, a broader swath of, and, and then when Senator McGuire described that funding at the state level, it can also be requested from Spire and the town and others, as they're just using it as a financing mechanism to build any kind of work or housing related to government, um. And so it's really about which groups are participating. Some of those sometimes like there one half of that I think is a JPA of government agencies, but the other half is a just low income group, um, locally that is also experienced with building that type of housing, which also would qualify for that type, but it's opened the public in the lottery system, I think. So out of.
It's not just workforce.
It's not just, it's going to be actually open to the public, but within certain criteria of financial qualification. But I think, you know, like we've discussed, there's definitely, you know, that could be very positive because some of the things I hear is the actual geolocation of potential candidates. It's not just the commute, but it's their, uh, adjacency to other growing communities that actually, um, can, you know, because of their size and everything else and the cost of living have a much more competitive package outside of just money. And so, you know, we need to find solutions to, to address that. And that, that might be a good one. Not all of them. And then, you know, it might be a lot of work for the outcome. Who knows? At, at smaller scales. I don't know, but we've asked if they have time for staff to research that. So, um, sorry, I guess that was me answering your question, but.
Thank you.
Um, so does anyone else have any questions? Um, okay. All right. So, yeah.
Well, I'll just say one thing, piggybacking on what you were saying about finding other incentives. I'm assuming there's some studies out there that must show what motivates people. You know, what kind of incentives other than money? Um, things like, you know, like you said, like the car or, um, you know, twenty thousand dollars toward house down payment or something like that. So.
I've, I've often posited the idea of educational, like giving actual staff time to, to doing, I don't know, PMPs and getting the licensing and, you know, um, for example, our, our last town manager probably had like three or four really highly qualified degrees that he got while serving on the police force, well, a lot of them, but, um, you know, so I definitely encouraged him to encourage others to expand upon that. But then even if the money's available for that, you know, when you want to work like balance and it's basically maybe an impetus of your own, but also kind of the necessity of your job, that the job has some kind of uh, responsibility in providing that, not just the money, but the actual time to support that during daily use. And I didn't get a response previously when I asked that, but it's another, uh, thing to consider.
I mean, not something to put, you know, hundreds of hours in, but like I'm saying, there just might be some data out there to kind of, and then see if it's any of it is, any of the suggestions or any of the things that pop up look like something that would be, you know, something the town would be able to pursue or be able to do. So, yeah, that's all.
Anything new? All right. Uh, so then we'll close down here and open it up to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to do three minutes at the dice? I mean, podium.
Side of Paul, maybe?
Oh, I, 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 I'm feeling a peer pressure. Is it going to go? No. All right. CNN, is there anybody online that?
We do not have any hands raised or emailed public comment.
All right. I'll close public comment, uh, and bring it back to the dice for final consideration. And, uh, I'm looking for a motion to introduce the item as requested. We'll take our time and let you explore it.
Yeah.
Uh, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution to revise the confidential professional, technical and mid-management salary schedule C for positions of senior civil engineer and building official and approved salary increase for existing senior civil engineer.
And just a correction on that, it's an introduction and the adoption would be, um, at the next meeting.
Okay. Do I need to read?
Do I need to read?
She helped you, so.
And it doesn't have a number until we adopt?
No, we'll bring the um, it'll have a number at the next meeting. Okay.
How'd that feel? Are you gonna do more? It was great. Thank you.
I will second it.
Okay.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Casisa, Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman is absent. Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
All right. Thank you. And so with that, we'll close item six and move to item seven, which is the council report, Town Manager Report, Adam Wolf.
You have a couple uh this evening. Uh, one, I just wanted to give you an update on actually the housing element for the next cycle where we are in that, because I haven't given a an update on that in a little bit. Um, it has not yet been adopted, so that will come back to you. Um, but we did send it to HCD, the state agency, on February twenty second um for what is a another sixty day review. So we're expecting to hear back from the state um in April, late, you know, April twenty, and they're they're taking their full sixty days, so April twenty second. I'm hoping that means that we'll we'll get to the Planning Commission uh in um either late April, probably early May, and then after that, we'll come to the Town Council for the adoption and it will be at both the housing element and safety element at that time for adoption. Wanted to note that we um purchased, we had been leasing three of our town vehicles were Kia Neros. Um, you've probably seen them around town with the logos on the side, white little all electric cars. So those were leased. Um, we uh purchased those three vehicles. Um, and I think, given the low mileage that we've had on them, got a really, I think, good deal um on those vehicles. I thought about all in with, you do pay taxes on on vehicles. I was wondering as a government agency if we did, but we do. I checked into that, but um and the service package was like twenty four thousand each. Um, and so uh I think thanks to Daria and and the finance team on that, along with uh Thomas Aaron's. Um, actually, it was mostly Darian on that one. We also purchased, and you've probably seen on your way out, take a look. We have um two new uh all electric vehicles added to our um uh our our vehicle fleet. Um, two Volkswagen ID fours, uh which are all wheel drive, which in this weather are much more uh uh, you know, able to navigate, especially these are going to be more ones for the building inspector. Um, and um that and another is a town pool car. Ultimately, the town, the building officials use that as well sometime, but it's going to be more of a pool car. Um, and so uh those are replacing a very old, um, I think it's a two thousand and two or three large expedition or something like that, that's out there that it gets about nine miles to the gallon. Um, and then another uh ultimately will replace the Honda Ridgeline, which has been uh effective, but is getting up there in age and maintenance is is taking a toll on that. So we'll still use that one for now. Uh, one was purchased, one was leased, I should say. And so we'll see, we'll evaluate in three years whether we need to keep the the second one of those vehicles. I wanted to mention um that um, this is, this is one that follows up on a, as we talked about at the last meeting. Um, there was the road resurfacing project that went out. We were going to advertise for bids. Um, MMWD informed us, um, while it's good news that they did say that they want to actually move forward now on a uh pipeline replacement project. Um, in the Marina Estates neighborhood, there's been over, I think, twenty one water main breaks and flooded some homes out there. And so I think it's a good thing that they're actually taking this up and doing that project. Um, they're going to fast track it as well. So we were informed. The problem is, they informed us, you know, we've been sort of trying to get them to do this project for a couple of years now. And RJ's team really, knowing that the road resurfacing project was going to come down the line. It would have been much better if they would have actually gotten on this last year or something like that. Um, so now essentially what that means is we're gonna rebid uh having to take out sort of about a third of the road resurfacing project out of the bid that we're going to advertise and push that off until the pipeline project can get done. We'll follow up right on the heels of that. But it does does change sort of the the bid package that we're going to advertise. Um, so uh I wanted to inform the council of that. No, typ- well, typically the practice has been that sort of modifications to the bid advertisement. We haven't.
Because it's decreasing, it's not increasing, and it's just removing scope. It's not modifying.
Yeah, and you know, it's, yes, so so um we certainly could if the council wanted us to, but.
No, I just, I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, no, I think we're good on that and we will come back when we, um, I forget what it's called, the acceptance of the lowest bidder, essentially that staff report will also come to you at that time, but it's going to be a reduced scope, so just be aware of that. So just on a a note on that, and we'll put out some, we're going to help in MMWD, but we'll certainly do it for our own residents to put out a broader public messaging regarding that change. We'll work with them in MMWD on the, what that specifically says, but I think right now our understanding is they will uh start construction in the fall of twenty twenty three and be done by spring of twenty twenty four. So hopefully we can just follow on the heels of that with finishing up that project. And finally, I wanted you to note that there'll be, uh, the village um has what is intending to put on a and will be putting on a a carnival at the North Lot um, starting on March thirty first. So actually, it's more of a spring break carnival, relatively small, given the size, but they will have rides and sort of the typical sort of things for people to do at a carnival. Uh, we're working with them on really just the time that uh the sort of the end time, so it's not an all night affair type of thing. Um, but this is really an application by the village. Um, they do have some, uh, you know, they do have an ability to hold special events there pursuant to the development agreement. So this is one of the things that they're like more corporate department wants to do, you know, as as well. I think it it could be, um, I think enjoyable for, we've had, we've had the circus there in the past. This is more of an outdoor venue, but we'll see if anybody goes, given the the weather we have at this time, but.
What's the date on that?
Start, it will be March thirty first um through April ninth. Line with spring break, so.
Yeah, Adam, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's it. And those are my reports.
Just quick question on the MM, on the um Water District. Is that mostly Estrada and Paloma, do you know? Because I know that's where the water breaks.
That's a great question. Yeah, I had, I did bring a map. It's 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 essentially Granada um and um El Camino.
Okay.
Estrada. And it does go up Sonora and up the hill um as well.
Do you know if Paloma's included? Because Paloma's had a number of breaks there also.
I'll fall, okay, I do, it's um, I do have.
No, that's, you can let me know later. Okay, that's fine. And then two other quick questions. Jenny, update on the sales tax issue and a couple of that with any update on Caltrans Overpass project?
All right.
Didn't mean to catch you off guard.
No, it's fine. I think uh this, so I'm I'm working with Dari on the sales tax issue, so we are ramping up, sort of being more um going to work with our consultant HDL and sort of get some other other folks involved. Um, I, you know, there, it's it's ongoing, so I think my understanding, all to say is that it's reached the highest levels of their agency and because it's sort of highlighted a, an issue with their policy, um, which is good that they recognize that, but it sort of leaves us in a world of like, well, what does that mean at the end of the day? So I do think um Dari and I were just talking about that earlier this week of, well, yeah, it was, uh, it was end of last week of getting HDL involved and seeing how they might be able to help us with that um particular issue. Overcrossing, I'll just say, we've met now recently with um the uh uh just most recently with Marin Transit um and the transit agencies to and with Caltrans staff to hear their concerns and some of the modifications that they think are necessary from a design perspective to ensure um that there aren't delays uh uh or significant delays and also just make it more accessible to their riders. That's their biggest concern. So actually, I have a letter going out tomorrow on that. Um, and there was also a meeting um with uh State Senator Mark McGuire and the district director regarding just the ability to, how do we, there's, I think, a one point two million dollar gap remaining still. Um, but all signs are pointing toward um that alternative for being, being, you know, everyone's moving forward with that. So that is exciting news. Um, but still some work to do on that front for sure.
Thanks.
I have nothing to report this week.
I attended a special meeting of the uh the police council last night where we approved um the community officers for the uh adjacent communities, um, as we already supported them in internally within Corder Madera, but other communities wanted those as well. So they're doing it through the uh JPA. And then uh we also um modified some of the um, was it caught like the the structure of it, but basically it was the same issues that we're struggling with with building officials and others. They're looking at this kind of six to seven year mid level, real doer producer level people trying to get them in uh and how to incentivize it. And so it was a a good discussion and ultimately we moved forward the recommendation from staff with the hope that they'll succeed, but um, outside of that, tomorrow, uh myself and uh Town Manager Adam Wolf will be available uh for two hours for open discussion at the um Farmer's Market at the Town Center of a booth, I believe. Uh, we look. That'd be easy. I would prefer that. Um, uh, so if you if you do have any uh discussion items that you want to uh dig into a little more deeply, um, that were available and would love to hear from you and the entire public. Um, and uh, yeah, so with that, we'll, yeah. Oh, I didn't, I thought Fred had already gone.
I just have a couple. I attended the H friend in Corder Madera. A reminder, uh, April fifteenth is when they're going to do lion's share. That's where the lines go out to senior um housing, uh, residential housing for seniors. Is there anything from changing light bulb to light guarding to that kind of stuff? I also attend Ross Valley um Pramatic Authority, also Tennessee uh MPA Council that uh Charles had mentioned earlier. And also tend uh tended the Marin wildfire prevention agency. The one thing new is when that measure was passed, it was built into there where that tax could be increased up to the CPI on a yearly basis. Didn't increase that tax in two thousand twenty three. It will be increased in two thousand for the two thousand twenty three, twenty four tax year. CPI was at five point two percent. They decided just to raise it to three percent. Um, and just as an added note, they said that the average homeowner pays about two hundred bucks on that tax, so it'd be about another six dollars or so. Um, and those taxes don't roll. It's either CPI or whatever they decide on a yearly basis, so they can't uh accumulate over period of time. Thanks.
Thank you.
And um Fred just reminded me of one thing. If you can't get enough of Adam this week, he will also be at the Lions Club on Thursday night, talking after dinner, and it's going to be a really great dinner. We have some volunteer chefs. It's only fifteen bucks for dinner and great after dinner entertainment, so hope you can come.
Made in blush. All right. So I guess that concludes the town council reports. Do we, do we, we don't open that up or anything? Okay, here we go. Uh, number eight, discussion of draft agenda for upcoming town council meetings. Is there any comments?
Uh, the only one suggestion, I think I sent an email to staff. We got Mark Brown from MMWPA, wants to come to one of our meetings and do a presentation on the projects that they're involved with. Um, there's no set date with it, so.
Understood. I see no reason why we wouldn't support that.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're working with them on that.
And and also on the agenda, um, Marin Country Day on the lighting, is that going to come back eventually, their lighting issue?
I'm planning on having that be a council item.
No, okay, so it's getting solved without us. Well, that's a beautiful thing.
That's right.
Excellent. So seeing uh no more direction to staff on the uh agenda items, I'll close that. And uh that leaves us to adjournment and we have no sanitary district uh meeting tonight, so this will be the end.
The end.